All right, all right, all right. Let's go ahead. I'm gonna call the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of August 14th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight I.
All right, then move on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have Captain Hy-Vee lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda with an ex- modification of moving item number J5, which is Resolution 2023-080, up to and ahead of Resolution 2023-078. Ultimately, that's just to be able to consolidate the agenda items when I have to leave the room, which I'll explain here in a second. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderwoman McAdams. Any comments or questions? All the comments are at that point in the agenda. It's an approval of some TIF matters, things like that, that I cannot be a part of the conversation according to state statute. So it's just nice that I only have to leave the room once, so thank you all for that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the modified agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have a few, but that's more once we get to L1, I believe it is. Moving on to Appointments, number or letter F, we have number one, appointing Andrea Dahlberg to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2026, and two, appointing Betsy Zimmerman to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2026. I would open it up for any comments. Alderman Perkins.
I'm gonna be a yes for the appointments, but I do have some concerns about the business level diversity with that board. Over the years, we've had difficulty getting together on what the budget's going to be, and I see the appointments that are in there. They look like great people. The one thing I don't see is I don't see any business acumen in their experience or any doubt of any business acumen in their experience. And that's where we've had some difficulty getting together on budget. So I guess I'm a yes. Like I say, I have concerns on the diversity of that board long-term, though.
Any other comments? For me as well, I would definitely echo what Alderman Perkins has been saying. We've been going back and forth with the DeKalb Public Library for, what, two years, moving into our third year at this point, with the unprecedented amount of economic development happening in the city of DeKalb, and I mean unprecedented. There should be no reason in the world, any taxing body in the city of DeKalb at this point shouldn't be able to increase their budget, which is fantastic. That's why we're doing all this, so government agencies have more money to be able to spend for their services to bring more value to the residents of the city of DeKalb, but at the same time, they have fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer to give some back, especially those that have lived in our community for two years, 10 years, 20, 30, 40 years. This is the time that it is really, I believe, a win-win. The taxpayer can benefit immensely, and the government agencies can benefit immensely. So I agree, we're gonna have to make sure that we work closely with the Library Board when we look at the reduction of the tax rate going forward with a goal of being 9% aggregate or below. And just for the record, two years ago, we were 11.5% aggregate, that means all the taxing bodies. Then we went to 11.1, then we went to 10.1. There is no reason in the world, with all the EAV increases that we're seeing, that every taxing body shouldn't continue to be able to drive down the tax rate while, again, raising their budgets in the process, which is a great thing. So I look forward to working with you, Alderman Perkins, on and the Library Board to figure out how they're gonna be a contributing member of driving that tax rate down. So thank you.
Very good.
Any other comments? All right, roll call to approve the two appointees. Oh, what'd I do? Oh, to bring it to the floor? Oh, okay. For appointments, okay. I take a motion to approve the two appointments that I read earlier.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Is that good, City Attorney? Awesome. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The two appointments have been approved. Also got a comment on those two. It's greatly appreciated by us at council, and I would say I would speak on behalf of everyone in the city of DeKalb. It's cool that people step forward, raise their hand, and say, hey, I've got a little subject matter expertise in a particular area. I would love to be able to contribute to the dialogue in the city of DeKalb, and these two did just that. So it's, I'm really proud that we have residents in our community that are willing to serve at a higher capacity. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. Oh, and City Attorney Rose, thank you. Anytime there's a point of order like that, never hesitate to let me know. I really appreciate that. Consent Agenda, Agenda Item G, number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 24th, 2023. Number two, minutes of the Joint Review Board meeting of April 28th, 2023. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through August 14th, 2023 in the amount of Number four, investment and bank balance summary through June 2023. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through June 2023. And number six, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, July 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The Consent Agenda has been approved. Agenda Item H, Public Hearings, we have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations. Number one, consideration of proposed route upgrades to the city of DeKalb's public transport system. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Newenkurchen, who's our Transit Manager, has brought these forward for your consideration. This time of year, the transit staff have reviewed the route experience of the previous year, particularly as it bears on the return of students and the larger volume of riders in the fall and in the spring while Northern's in session. And there are other factors, too, such as our expanding runs to the Elburn Metro Station and also the need for continuing flexibility and expansion to bring people to and from work in our growing south side, in the industrial zoning in the south side. So there are a number of things spread out before you tonight. None we haven't talked about here before in other contexts. The Elburn Line, you know, from a couple of our conversations during the winter, early spring, about commuter rail and the reports that were given, and we talked about expanding so that we could better test what their potential ridership might be over time, and so that's included in here. Cortland, we were doing a route that's made regular stops in Cortland, and there were less than 30 riders in the past 12 months. And so what we've set up, and we'll be advertising this so residents of Cortland know about it, if they want to use a bus, and that's a dial-a-ride, so you can call the day before, and that would be better than dialing a day off to make sure that there's transportation to whatever your destination is, as we do in other low-volume areas of our service area. And then finally, as I mentioned, it's called the Chicago West Line, that's Route 19, goes to the south part of DeKalb, south of 88, and we're increasing route, there are increasing route times, which is to say, they're not getting longer, we're gonna have more, more times back and forth so that people can get to and from work through what's rapidly becoming a two-to-three shift day in that area. So that's what's before you. We recommend that you support this, and we'd like to put these changes in place by this time next week.
Counsel, comments, questions? Alderman Smith?
Just so everybody's aware, this is paid for through the FTA and Downstate Dope. There's no city monies involved out of this at all.
Good point. Thank you, Alderman.
I know that's always an issue. Thank you.
Yeah, and I noted that, I should've said it. The total of all these increases is gonna be another $380,000 annually that the city's putting in, but as Alderman Smith said, this comes from FTA grants, federal-level grants in the state of Illinois, Downstate, the dope money, Downstate Operating Assistance Program. So expanded service and no additional cost to riders, that's pretty good news.
There's an acronym, they should've reached into the source and come up with a few other potential names. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Walker.
City Manager, so you're saying 100% of the cost will be paid with grants?
Correct. Thank you.
Any others? Well, I'm particularly excited about the routes out to South DeKalb. You know, we've worked hard as a council to be able to provide more opportunity for our residents in the city of DeKalb, and that opportunity is manifesting itself or blowing up on the south side. I mean, there are so many wonderful, good-paying jobs by world-renowned companies. I just think it's just, it's awesome to know that we continue to bring those to our residents, and then those that don't have the means to be able to get out there, that we continue to figure out different ways that we can give them access to those jobs. So, Mike, great job. Appreciate everything you're doing there, and City Manager and your staff.
Mayor, just one thing, just to clarify, it just occurred to me, somebody may mistake what I said. So what we're talking about, no additional cost? If you're an adult, what do you have to pay if you go on one way, Mike?
It's 50 cents.
Yeah.
So it won't be additional, but you know, if somebody gets on and says, hey, I heard it was free, no, that's not what we're saying.
Yeah, fares still apply, but no additional cost to the city of DeKalb.
A lot of investment, more investment.
All right, well, it's a consideration. You're just looking for head nods, right?
Yes.
Yes. Looks like you've got that, so yeah, proceed forward. Looking forward to seeing those changes made.
Was that an easy start, or what?
I know, that was great.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to Resolutions. Item J1, Resolution 2023-076, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the SFY 2024 Downstate Operating Assistance Agreement in the amount of $6,282,800. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Since you like the expansion of our route upgrades, we really definitely have to approve this. Now, not just for that reason, but because 65% of all of our funding for our transit system comes from the Downstate program, and this particular agreement carries us through the next fiscal year, and it's in the amount of $6,282,800.
City Council, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-076 passes. Number two, Resolution 2023-077, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of structural firefighting gear from Air One Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $30,429 plus shipping. Plus shipping, that's awesome. That shipping better not be, you know, double.
We don't have any coupons left, so.
Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
So as you might imagine, turnout gear does wear out, and to make sure that our, around the country, our fire service replaces the gear as needed, there is a standard of 10 years, and we're trying to keep that, we've been trying to keep with that for a long time. So we have seven firefighters whose gear will expire later this year, and we have two of our newly hired firefighters who have been using some older gear, but not past its marked date. So what we'd like to do is replace those nine sets of turnout gear. The overall cost has already been anticipated in FY '23 budget, comes out of fire department operations, the cost is $30,429. We recommend.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-077 passes. Then moving on to the modified number, Resolution 2023-080, authorizing the purchase of and equipping of six 2023 Ford Police Interceptors from Sutton Ford of Madison at the Illinois Central Management Services contract pricing in an amount not to exceed $312,950. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Manager. As the council knows, and I think some people in the audience know, if not, the city goes after the best price on the particular type of vehicle that, whether it's police or public works or fire needs. Best price meaning the lowest responsible price, and the bidding is done for these by the state of Illinois, and they pick a couple dealers in the state that will make, in this case, the Ford interceptors available at that price. It might be different for Chevy and so forth, but we like the Ford. Last year, we got caught in a supply chain snafu, and the two, the two of the vehicles we intended to buy last year could not be acquired, so we have six before you tonight. Usually there are four that we try to replace every year in the police fleet, and so these six are, and they're upfitting, are included in our capital equipment replacement fund, Fund 420. The layout is in your background, the total is not to exceed $312,950. Hopefully it's a few bucks less, but that may be what it is, and we've negotiated those hard prices with the dealer, so we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderwoman Zazada.
So, you know, as I was looking at this, I was wondering why we aren't considering hybrid vehicles at this time, and I did a little research, and I could see that they're really backed up, and that cities who were originally going to buy all hybrid vehicles, it was impossible to do so, period. So they switched over to full gas vehicles instead. So I just wanna note, I guess for the public's information, the challenge with the supply chain issues in getting hybrid vehicles, and I guess I also wanna note that I think it's really important as we move forward, you know, to save costs when they're available, as they're available, to move into hybrid and electric vehicles.
We, it's a good point. We are looking, and even with buses, as you know from one of the last meetings when Mike was before you at the DSC, mentioned that we were looking, but there are lots of issues as you're hearing now. We have high hopes, high expectations. We're behind in the delivery, not only of electrical power to, and then the equipment to deliver that power, and charging stations and the rest. And then there are the manufacturer of the actual vehicles that could be used for hybrid purposes or fueled by hybrid purposes. And so we watch that. Deputy Chief Levertin does that for the police department, and it's, it's been a frustrating couple of years. Again, high hopes, less than stellar delivery.
I agree, Alderwoman Zazada. I mean, as much as we can move to that, that is the future. I personally, and I think multiple council members, would be totally behind that, absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-080 passes. All right, moving on to, which would be the new number four, Resolution 2023-078, approving a liquor production liquor license for Byers Brewing LLC, DBA, Byers Brewing Company, for the location at 216 North Sixth Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Byers Brewing, which has been established since 2019 in our downtown, is looking to acquire what was Forge Brewery on North Sixth Street for production, and that, Forge Brewery closes doors in December 2022. So this is the first start, this would be a conditional license, and it awaits a state license to make it final, so we recommend approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Walker.
Hey, I got a question. Hey, does the business owner anticipate having any video gaming terminals at the new establishment in the future?
He does not. He doesn't qualify for video gaming.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ruth.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote. So ultimately, my, my, thank you. So Resolution 2023-078 passes. This has nothing to do, he's my tenant, but this has nothing to do with my building, but I just figured, might as well just abstain from it. Also, it's really cool you all approved it, because anyone that knows the Byers family, that is a family-run business, and talk about putting their blood, sweat, and tears into trying to make this successful. It's just been awesome to watch them firsthand, and they are truly, they bleed orange and black. They are DeKalb people, and they really want to contribute. Steve was recently elected to the DeKalb School Board as well, so they're, they're just committed to DeKalb, and it's really cool to see the expansion of his business. All right, with that, I have to recuse, or I have to accuse myself, and I'll just leave the room for the next two items, and I will turn the gavel over to Senior Alderman Verbic to go ahead and lead those discussions. Thank you, Alderman.
Resolution 2023-079, authorizing an architectural improvement program, economic incentive for 255 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $22,790, Thai pavilion. May we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved by McAdams, seconded by Zazada. City Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Wong is the owner and also a DeKalb resident, and he has been talking with us for a while now about some very substantial remodeling he'd like to do in his restaurant, which is a very popular restaurant downtown, seven days a week. He intends to do a lot of exterior and interior work. The exterior work will include tuck pointing, some window replacement, exterior painting, upgrading of some windows, and just generally his broad storefront, it's a very broad front, as you know. And then inside, refinishing of floors, new stairs, enhanced lighting, inside and out, and new accessible entryway or more accessible entryway. So the, the cost is significant. He submitted just a partial list, which came to $54,510. His request is less than half of that. He would've been entitled up to $25,000, but very straight in his proposal, and we think it's a good use of that TIF money, that private rehab work, and so we support it, and hope you will, too.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ruth, please call the roll.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinances L, motion passes, sorry. Ordinances L, first reading, Ordinance 2023-026, authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of fee simple title to the property located at 128 through 140, South Second Street, PIN May we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Walker, seconded by Larson. Pub, public comment. First, we have Nancy Dougherty. Ordinances 2023, comment on this topic. Nancy?
Thank you, I'm Nancy Dougherty. I'm here regarding this particular item, regarding acquisition and parking. In fact, when I looked at the agenda and cooked on additional information, I saw a picture of my car in front of the tenant, Tangles. I have a red 2016 Dodge Dart, so I felt that was an omen that I should be here. It appears that it has been decided that this building needs to be acquired. The manor is still in negotiations. I do not know how much parking is needed for the city. When 330 Grove Street was sold, the new owner indicated he would provide more parking and a drive-by business. In fact, if you want more parking, why not convert some parks, like the one on Fourth and Lincoln that has flower planters in it? My thoughts and concerns turn to the tenant in this building. I'm of the understanding that the city's goal is to bring businesses into town. I'm sure Tangles came into town to draw people to town, and then they would enjoy and support all the other businesses that are in town. I would request that when this property is acquired, that the tenant be given appropriate compensation for all the improvements done to her business. On good faith, the tenant renovated to be in town, and those expenses should be returned to her, including loss of business during this time of transition, relocation, and rent adjustment. The city of DeKalb's 2025 strategic plan was written and approved, was written and approved February 26, 22, 2016. It appears the last update was the first quarter of 2017. None of you were involved in doing the strategic plan, so it would appear that maybe some sort of update to let us know what's going on, are we compliant with this strategic plan that was approved? Also, it's my understanding there's no historical preservation organization in DeKalb. This would just be another acquired building. So when this building is acquired, there should be a plaque indicating that this 148-year-old building was the first factory in the world made solely for the manufacturing of barbed wire on a mass scale here in DeKalb, Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next up is Marty O'Connor. Welcome, Marty.
My name is Marty O'Connor, from 419 Gale Avenue in DeKalb, and one of the first things I'd like to address is my Alderman Scott McAdams' comments at the July 10th meeting. As a volunteer, gives up several hours a week at the Glidden Homestead and advocate for historic preservation, I found it really insulting, the comments he made about barbed for historic preservation, I found it really insulting, the comments he made about barbed wire and the comparison to a twelfth-century cathedral in Edinburgh is absurd to a hundred and forty-eight-year-old manufacturing here in DeKalb. One of the reasons you got to visit the building that old is nobody tore it down for over five hundred years. I'm not a developer or speculator, so I can't comment on the appraisal value of this property. I don't think it should be forcibly condemned and taken from the owner. He should get fair value. All of you as council members, as our representatives with fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, should be looking for a good return on their investment and get the best price they can. But as one of the taxpayers whose money you're spending, I'd like to know where the return on this investment will be if that building is torn down. Because I don't see any revenue positive indication from several parking spots. So that's comments.
Thank you, Marty. Next, we have Steve Capitan. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, um Alderman. DeKalb is what it is today because of the invention and production of barbed wire by Joseph Glidden, Isaac Elwood, and a German immigrant by the name of Jacob Hesch, who bequeathed the money to build the very public library where we find ourselves this evening. Elwood and Lyd- Glidden got together to build this first-in-the-world barbed wire manufacturing plant, making a product that transformed farming and ranching across the U.S. and the entire world. It spawned other industrial development in the United States or in DeKalb, and the influence of Elwood helped bring NIU to DeKalb. I'd like to make a few other points. Even though the mayor has recused himself from participating in this decision, it doesn't change the fact that he directly benefits from taxpayer money to build this very expensive parking lot. I also would ask, what is the total cost, including demolition, cost of utility relocation, and parking lot construction, relocation of tenants? Why haven't we seen a drawing of the parking lot design? Are there any potential conflicts with the railroad right-of-way, which appears to go right up to the edge of the building? In fact, I saw on the aerial that in the gravel parking lot, there were some cars currently parked within the railroad right-of-way that would no longer be available under a development of a parking lot. Historic sites are valuable and effective generators of economic development surrounding tourism. This building is in the heart of downtown and would benefit the whole of downtown, not just a few property owners. It would be a source of pride for the entire city. I urge the council to consider options that would leverage that value for the benefit of our city and its downtown.
Thank you, Steve. City manager.
Uh thank you. Well, this is uh the uh third opportunity that council has had to discuss this and we've had lots of public participation, including tonight. It was back on July tenth that um the council considered and tabled the ordinances, which is before you tonight, uh after a general consideration on June twenty-sixth. And at that time, it was understood that uh the property owner would be cooperative with the city in allowing us to gain access to the building so we could get a a certified appraisal of of the both the inside and outside of the building. We hadn't done an external, which we admitted was not what we wanted, but we couldn't gain access. So we were granted access, we appreciate that. And that happened on July twenty-sixth. Uh the full appraisal that resulted from that was attached to the council agenda. Publics had a chance to access and review it. Uh it was uh commented on in the local newspaper. Uh the the number that came in from a very prestigious firm and 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 a very solid appraiser, Mrs. Lee, was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's in her opinion, the as-is market value. Reviewed this extensively, his staff and also with the city attorney find no flaws and it it uh it some of the other work had been flawed in the sense that pending uh sales rather than actual sales were used for comparables. That's not uh within the rails typically. But uh so I I wanted to report to you tonight, that's that's what has been accomplished since the last meeting. Uh we knew that the owners would not be available tonight, so we're not asking for action tonight. What we're asking for is just a little more direction. Uh I've I've given the council on uh page five of your background an A B C, kind of a three-step thing. So tonight, no action. Uh what we'd like to do is sit down when uh Mr. Sears returns with his attorney, possibly next week, set up a time and see if there is some room to arrive at an agreeable price, a cash price. Then if not, we can come back to you on the second meeting of this month on August twenty-eighth and report that. Or if there is an opportunity, report that as well. Uh what I'm proposing is if should there be uh no agreement or if if the property owners are not interested in in uh further negotiation, then uh we would bring this back on the agenda on September eleventh, which happens to be the first meeting in September um for a council vote, one way or another. So that's what's before you tonight. I I did want to say something since there was a it was an interesting article. It was, you know, a brief article on the history of the of the building and the chronicle. I think it was today. So um for people in the audience and people who might be uh looking in, um actually the a a council, a previous council back in two thousand sixteen contracted with the Lakota Group uh in the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars to do uh an assessment of the buildings in the downtown area, including this building, um either side of Lincoln Highway and about a block either way. Uh and it's a very interesting read. Identifies where the 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 properties, what their history's been, what their condition is, uh what the uses have been over time, uh whether or not they are on any kind of a registered, local, state, or or federal. And if I may, just a couple minutes, if I may, Alderman, uh introduce a couple of interesting things into this general conversation. So uh it actually says that the coming of the railroads was the most dramatic thing that hit DeKalb until probably Meta. And uh that began and before the Civil War, continued uh in in a mighty and a kind of a muscular way after the Civil War. And it was in this period that Mr. Z- Glidden, Hesch, and Elwood were involved in working out some some ideas for barbed wire. And there are different reports on where the some of those key model wire uh inventions uh were actually uh created, uh probably in workshops scattered around DeKalb, maybe even in Sycamore. But it's darn sure, and it's been reported here by some people who've spoken from the floor, that in eighteen seventy-five or thereabouts, the building that we're talking about on South Second was constructed. And it was behind another building, which is where Eduardo's is now, that was the first uh place where the DeKalb Fence Company was organized. And to find more room, this building was built. And it was from the beginning until sometime in the mid eighteen eighties, used for the manufacture of barbed wire. But then things changed dramatically, partly because uh Mr. Z- Glidden, Hesch, and Elwood needed more space. So they found more space and you can still see remnants of some of those manufacturing buildings to the east side in DeKalb. But for this building and for the for tonight's purposes, here's some interesting facts. So uh I mentioned by uh the mid eighteen eighties, the existing building was now taken over by a superior barbed wire company. Now, I don't know the the ownership group behind that. I'm I'm thinking some of the same people, but maybe others as well. But then um in the eighteen nineties, the use started changing by um and and this, I'm not gonna read it all, but this is this is interesting stuff and and I encourage people to go to that study, which we'll put online. I think we'll put it on.
It's already here.
Okay.
Great.
The building uh was uh converted uh in the early nineteen hundreds, nineteen oh five, I believe, to uh storefronts along the Second Street side. There was still some uh work being done upstairs, but then uh that started changing. Before long, a grocery opened up on Second Street, uh a purveyor of tea, I'm not exactly sure um how much of the building was dedicated to that. And then printing took hold in the building, both upstairs and downstairs. And then following that, and I'm gonna jump ahead because there were some other, there was also ice cream made there in the early before World War One. And then uh for the longest time, the longest time of any use, from nineteen twenty-four to nineteen forty-six, this building was owned and was the was the main manufacturing place for piano rolls. Never knew that. The Clark Orchestra Roll Company uh manufactured those rolls until after World War Two. And then a clothing factory made a go at it uh in the east portion, printing in the general store uh continuing in on Second Street. And this particular analysis doesn't take us through all the fifties and sixties when there are a lot of smaller uses in some of the storefront uh spaces. By that time, um the east side of the building was largely used for storage of one type or another and and more recently, since uh two thousand two, I believe, since the Sears acquired it uh for storage. So, an interesting history, um barbed wire only one of many uses in the building. But I do want to say that this uh proposed use, the parking, wasn't prompted by the city staff. People who frequent our downtown know we have a couple of different rhythms. There's a daytime rhythm from about seven in the morning till, you know, four thirty or five, which uh doesn't have a lot of parking behind where the city hall is now. Not a lot of on-street parking unless there are trucks coming to and from city hall. There isn't much in and out of uh like Lord Stanley's isn't open, uh downtown restaurants are open, some people park there and walk. But after four thirty or five at night, it's very difficult to find a parking space on the south side of Lincoln Highway, north of the tracks. And there are people who are go into this uh driving mode where they go in circles in the parking lot behind city hall, waiting for somebody to leave so they can park. And why is that important? And here's where you understand what the return is on the possibility of investment in this. We wouldn't be doing this just for the sake of doing it. It's it's the businesses downtown that are springing up and are happy about that. But if you go and talk to the business owners and managers, they're not killing it. They do when the Egyptians open, but then Tuesday and Wednesdays, if they're open on Mondays, most of them aren't, Tuesdays and Wednesdays not so much, Sundays not so much. There's another rhythm at night and the Egyptian is a key part of that, but the Egyptian isn't running every night. And uh people do other things. They don't go to the same place to eat every night. So uh to gain more traction downtown with sales tax, with restaurant bar tax, with uh frankly, just people visiting and getting to know our town and maybe wanting to come back and do other things or make this a destination, we want to have parking close in. Now, we've had debates here many times over over many years, decades. How much is enough parking? Uh and and uh people who wrestle with this on my side of the microphone here will tell you, there's no one answer to that. We've got lots of parking as as uh Nancy said here earlier, south of of the tracks uh between Third and Fourth Street. It's only used on those very busy Friday nights and Saturday nights when the other other, it's the last parking places park at, people park at, unless there's an event of friend, to say. So and why is that? Because people, whether they go to a mall or they go to in DeKalb to a restaurant, they want to get as close as they can. It's not about weather. They don't want to wa- they want to go there and then they want to get back in their car and go home. And uh I would argue that with anybody. I I don't see any evidence otherwise, frankly. So that's it. And and people have come to us uh as in my own case, probably two and a half years ago when I was approached for the first time by a downtown merchant saying, let's let's see what we can do. And we did some things, but uh just kind of minor adjustments. And then we did the the downtown road diet. So here we are. There is support for it downtown and particularly in that block, which would be able to make some renovations in the rear of their stores so people would find them uh more agreeable entries to their businesses and restaurants. So uh this is a discussion that has generated a lot of of conversation in town, I'm glad for it. Uh we're not alone in this, every every small city is wrestling with this. And then neighborhoods within big cities are wrestling with the same questions. We don't have a parking garage, uh not likely to happen anytime soon, so here we are. Happy to answer any questions, may I?
Alderman Walker.
City manager, is there a way you can give me a breakdown of how much this will, you know, I know you don't know a hundred percent what it'll cost, cause you know
Yeah.
just, you know, for the paving, the stripping, the comm ed, relocation, all that?
That's a fair, that's a fair question and it's a good question. So uh we don't know where we're gonna be on the price right now, right? That's what we're talking about here. So wherever that, let's say it was three seventy. We know that demolition is somewhere, any, I don't know, we have gone to bid, could be anywhere from sixty to eighty thousand. Maybe it's more than that, but somewhere in that area. Because we know we've we've been involved in uh uh with with people who have been doing demolitions in the downtown in recent years, so we know about what the price is. Depends on on uh the bid results. Comm ed, another big question. Uh there it doesn't make a lot of sense unless you remove the large poles that are there. Once the building's down, uh uh comm ed would want to move them out of the way. So you gotta go underground, then they have that new services to the buildings that are there because you're no you're no longer overhead. I put in a hundred thousand for that, I believe. And that maybe, I hope that's too much, but we don't know. Uh there there's other utilities in the alley, you know, there's sewer and there's water, so it would have to be encased and so there's an extra cost for that. Then uh the building would be down, the the uh the foundation would have been removed, but it would have been, while comm ed is doing its work, probably the sequence of things would be that the uh parking lot wouldn't start until comm ed was out of there. And then it has to be graded over, uh subgrade has to be put in with gravel and so forth and uh maybe a liner. There has to be some some way to shed the water because now you got a hard s- hard surface. And uh there's that cost and uh paving and the striping and all the rest of that. So on the outside, all-in acquisition, demolition, uh construction, comm ed, and so forth, seven fifty is what I've told the council.
All right, see, here's my problem with it. Seven fifty, and I'm thinking that's lowballing it because there's no guarantees or come close to that, you know, the city will get the building for three seventy. So that's my first, you know, the first alarm thing. Then the next one is twenty-seven parking spots roughly, right? Is that what you?
Correct.
So let's, you're making your numbers up, I'm just gonna make my numbers up. Let's just run it off to eight, eight hundred thousand. So you're ti- you're trying to tell me that you think it's a good idea to, for twenty-seven parking spots, to spend eight hu- hundred thousand dollars and not really make? See, I kind of got a problem with what you say, you know, because I'm down in DeKalb a lot and I don't see the traffic that you see. Maybe you see something different than I do, but I don't see that. So I'm 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 going back and forth with why we need extra parking spots when we have lots that are on Second Street that people don't park in and we have a full lot on Fourth Street that no one ever parks in. Now, if we want to, you know, the downtown businesses to prosper and to make some money, then I would think that, how about having them park on Fourth Street and walk to El Hemidors and pass some of the, you know, the the stores on Lincoln Highway? Maybe they may want to walk in, because me and my wife like to do that and my kids. We like to just walk in there and I like getting cookies I'm not supposed to have, spending money. So I I'm just saying, if we're gonna keep talking about not just the building that the mayor's in, you know, how about we talk about everybody that is in downtown DeKalb and the whole central business district? And it just makes sense, you know, that we talk about everybody, not just the people that are in his building, because the thing is this, you know, our mayor recused himself for, you know, up here, but when we hear things on the radio of of this landlord getting bad-mouthed and so many, you know, slumlord and all that, I kind of take offense to it because it's like, I've known a lot of this man's tenants and I've never heard anything like that. So it just seems to me that you want this man to work in good faith, although it just seems not everybody's working in good faith with him. Now, I'm not around for all the meetings and I don't know what goes on behind closed doors, but I will say this. If you guys want things on good faith, then I think that everybody needs to practice that and I think that we should tell some of our friends, we should quit bad- that, and I think that we should tell some of our friends, we should quit badnapping people all the time, and maybe, just maybe, you can get to the desk and maybe you guys can have a good conversation about this. But at the end of the day, I'm always voting this no. I don't care if we do it today, tomorrow, whatever, I'm not for this and I never will be.
City manager.
Let's just put some numbers to it, and now this is quick and dirty, and I'm just going to get back to that. So, I said about $750,000. So, 27 spaces, and let's say that five days a week, between the hours of 5:00 and midnight, there are only 27 cars that come in. And they are people who are eating downtown, two people, three people, four, whatever. And let's put $100 on their bill. It's not too hard to do that if you come in on a Friday night, Saturday night. Hundred, okay, times 27, all right, that's one night, times five, five nights a week, let's not take credit for Monday night, many of them are closed, Sunday night, many of them are closed. Let's say five nights a week, and we could shave that, but that's five nights a week, times 52 weeks, not counting the, you know, holidays when you get a little more activity on weekends and such. So what's that come to? $700,000 plus. So, there is a return. People are spending that money. Now, we don't get, we don't get the tax money, all of that, right? Thank God, if we were 100% taxing. But that's money that's spent downtown, that's spread around. Our job isn't just to make tax, actually, our money is not to be the tax taker, but to consider how private parties are going to fare in trying to create value, which also is taxable. That's what we're supposed to be doing. That's one of our key jobs. Particularly in the downtown, and downtowns are never easy to, you never stop promoting and you never stop helping to keep people afloat and do what we can. We don't have other ways to do it. Tiff is one way we can do that. So, I just, I wanted to mention that. You know, we can shave or inflate some of this stuff, but that's not a wild number.
Alderman McAdams and Alderman Zasada.
So, many things to talk about.
First of all, I want to say thank you for bringing up, excuse me. Thank you for bringing up my comments previously about the barbed wire, the history of barbed wire. And I think I need to issue an apology. My words drew the wrong picture. Let me try again. The point I was trying to make is that a modern sophisticated tourist does not come in here not knowing anything about the issue that they're going to look at. And so they've been on the internet and they've read a bunch of stuff about barbed wire, and they come here, right? When I was a kid, my mom used to say, "We're related to Sacagawea, and we have Native American blood in our blood." She said it often, mentioned it frequently, it was a big deal. And then they came up with ancestry.com, and I did the test, and it turns out that we are not related to Sacagawea. There is no Native American blood in our blood. It was just bad history, a lie, a misconception, whatever it was, we are not related to Sacagawea. Similarly, DeKalb has strayed from the path. We didn't invent barbed wire. Barbed wire, there were six patents for barbed wire, before our three guys went into business. And if we say we invented barbed wire, the first tourist that walks in is going to say, "No, you didn't. There were six patents before that." And then we've embarrassed them. So we have to say the truth, which is, it was the first manufacturing plant for barbed wire, which is interesting, but it's not historic, it's not the, you know, the place where the civil war was settled, it's not where Lincoln and Douglas invented, which we have some of that in here now. It's just a building where people worked and made money and manufactured barbed wire. And it was a wonderful thing for DeKalb at the time. And then barbed wire was disapprobated by evil people to use it in prisons, prison camps, and temples. And so you can't do a history of barbed wire and ignore the 20th century. So, when we have our plaque for barbed wire, we should mention that barbed wire was also used in the camps, and used in prisons, and used to keep people down. It was designed to keep animals from migrating, but it was used against people. And your tourists are not going to think, "I don't care about the people that are using." Most tourists are very concerned about, they're very empathetic about the plight of the people that were put in those camps. So, barbed wire is not going to bring us tons and tons of tourists. What's going to bring us tourists is the first intercontinental road that was ever designed for car traffic drives right through our downtown, and we barely know it. Now, the building in question, if you wanted to turn it into a historical monument, you have to have $500,000 in the bank. And everyone is going to be saying, "Turn it into a historical monument?" I say, "Do you have a half a million dollars? No." Okay, well, that's what we need. And so we could use the half million dollars, we won't talk about $750,000. Let's say we use the $500,000 to give the ability to rebuild the building. That building is lighted, folks. That building is not in good shape. That building is attractive. We just gave away a bunch of money to redo the front facade of businesses in town. They've never taken advantage of this. It looks like it don't. And I know I'm the one that has to say the uncomfortable truths to make everybody unhappy, and I'm happy to play that role if we have an honest, open discussion. Nobody's coming here to shop and to drop a couple hundred dollars when they have St. Charles, and they have Geneva, and they have those other places close by that don't have blighted buildings. Look at their downtowns are gorgeous. Their downtowns are immaculate and perfect. We don't have that here yet, but that's what we're aiming for, and the goal is to bring in people from outside to spend their money here. And the businesses, merchants, they're all for tearing down lighted buildings. Empty buildings and ugly buildings scare tourists. So we have to develop our downtown to attract a modern audience. And we can't have it be all rural, hokey, neglected. That's not attractive to modern people with money. That's very attractive to other people in the rural areas, but they don't come to downtown DeKalb, and they haven't a long, long time. So we have to, we have to develop a new audience, and our newer audience is people in the western suburbs who'll hop on a train, come out to DeKalb for the day, drop a couple hundred dollars at restaurants and shops, and then jump back on the train and go home. That's who we're developing it for. And if you've got a plan in the business district downtown that caters to those customers, welcome to DeKalb. And if you want to use a building that would cater to customers as storage, well, we'd like to buy your building. And we are going to, we're going to pay to compensate the owner for the property. It's not like we just take the property and steal it. We pay for it. And so then the question is, how much should we pay? So a blighted building is not going to be at $700,000. You're not going to pay $700,000 for a building that needs all sorts of stuff, right? If you spend $700,000 on a building, you're going to spend it on a brand-new one that doesn't need any work, that you can go right in and do your, you know, fulfill your dreams. So we have to be thinking long-term. And then, I keep hearing this false argument. We're not buying a parking lot, guys. We're not. This isn't about buying a parking lot. This is about getting rid of a blighted building. And this is sending a message to the downtown, fix your stuff or sell it. We're building a new downtown. And if your idea is for the next 50 years, you're going to have to put up with me as a bad neighbor and my junky building, the city council and the city itself has decided, no, we're not going to do that. I don't know who told the business community in DeKalb, just hold on to your building, don't redevelop it. Someday, some billionaire's going to come and overpay for the property. Because we have a bunch of owners in town who think, "I'm not going to do any more repairs, I'm not going to do any more work. I might fix it up like a little bit so it's not ugly, but I'm not going to fix it up." And I'm just, there's all sorts of problems with some of these buildings. Fix your building, folks. If you own the building and you want to be in the downtown, which is a shopping district, then you need to develop a building that's attractive to shoppers. And if it's unattractive to shoppers, we have our eyes on you. And so it's time to think about, should I spend some money to redo my building? Should I get rid of it now while, you know, there are property values and the building market's pretty good? So, you know, this is, make a decision on what you want to do with your buildings. We're listening. We want to do the right thing by all of our owners, but we do not want it to come to this. This is kind of an unpleasant and unfortunate experience, but I think all of us together know that we want to be a shopping mega for the western suburbs, where folks have a lot of disposable income and they're looking to spend it.
Much of what Alderman McAdams has referenced resonates with me. I think this building has history, but it's no architectural marvel or beauty. Every building has a history. And I'm a Realtor, I have a heart for buildings. I like flipping them, I like making them beautiful and finding the value in it and restoring it. So that's near and dear to my heart. This building is not quite there. Even at $750,000, we're talking about a force multiplier. Having this parking lot, having a parking lot built where you can access an entire block that is the most densely packed block in our downtown, where people can access it from a whole other position, is highly valuable, especially from an accessibility standpoint. It allows people who may not have the same mobility levels as others to access these buildings and these shops, and makes it a lot easier to just pop in and pop out, like people frequently want to do, but I, you know, I myself have circled the block and been like, "Oh, there's no, okay, I'm leaving, you know, I can't do this right now." So, you know, the way that I have used downtown frequently has been, you know, we go to the dance studio, then we go to the dinner place, and we go to, we go to the Egyptian theater, and we go in that little circuit of just a triangle block right all around Second Street. And parking is tight, and we park, you know, farther and farther away, and it's okay, it's good for us to walk. And I have not generally been a huge proponent of parking downtown, period. I have been the one who's been like, "Hey, can we reduce our parking requirements? Because this is silly, we really don't need more parking spots." However, I can see this being a force multiplier in this small location where you add value, where you've got a blighted building, truly, because that's how you get a TIF district. Part of the standards for getting a TIF district is identifying that there are a significant number of blighted buildings, and I'm sure this is one of them, and that's maybe even the report that you were reading from. So, what I'm saying is, making this change, I can see as a force multiplier, increasing the value of what is already existing, and allowing places that are, you know, that have been for sale, like Eduardo's, which is looking to add something, but I'm sure they're struggling to have anyone come there because they're like, "Ah, where do we park?" And that kind of thing. So, you know, also, making that tight, tight alleyway less of an issue. And if you look at the images of the building, in the appraisal report, it shows pretty clearly that this building is really not being used to its highest level of use. It has potential probably to be used better and at a higher use level. However, there are many other uses that would add more value to the community, and I think this one is an appropriate and reasonable use. Think that's it.
Thank you. Where I'm at with this is similar to Alderman Walker from a standpoint of that no response. And the reason for that is, I am against the use of TIF money for parking. I believe TIF money should be used for new development. We've seen some great success with that. Where I see your point of ROI, people coming downtown and whatnot, but I'm not buying into it. I'm buying into investment in redevelopment, private, public, using the $800,000 or whatever, plus legal fees. I'm not sure where those are right now. But, setting up quickly, I'm interested in stopping this all this evening, in fact. The money that should support parking downtown should come from other sources. That revenue should come from a central business district special service area, for example. That's come up, hopefully it's on an upcoming agenda, where all downtown property owners would invest in this fund, that they could choose to use funds for new parking, maintenance of parking, whatever the case may be. But, again, the view is, this $800,000 will benefit a few property owners and businesses, certainly. I understand that's why they approached you, to get this done. And one property owner, my understanding is, also wants to invest towards this, if that's still happening. But, in addition to a central business district SSA, those revenues should also come from pay stations, for example. Pay stations are something else we've talked about that would certainly help that enforcement automatically, take it out of the hands of the police department and labor force as much as possible and automate it. And that will help guarantee people closer parking spots to where they want to go more often. But right now, last data I saw, now this is back with Chief Lowry, with the most parking ticket offenses were made by employees of businesses downtown and the property owners, so, or business owners. Thirdly, the Egyptian keeps coming up. I suggest a $2 per ticket charge on each ticket sold at the Egyptian Theater to come directly to parking. That could be maintenance, that could be new parking, again, more appropriate revenue streams to support downtown parking. But if you look at $800,000 in TIF, 400 and some odd thousand of that would be from the school district, correct? If my math serves me, it's 62% of our property taxes? Really? School district really wants to spend 400 and some odd thousand in parking downtown DeKalb? I do not. So, my motion would be to cease pursuit of this building, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any other comment? Alderman Larson.
There's just a few things that I'm going to kind of ramble, because I've just been writing notes, and these are just clarifications. One was about the mayor, and that the reason he's going to financially make money off this. He actually has two free lots behind his building now. If we take it over, he loses those. So he loses an asset. So he's not going to be making out on this deal. And I think, in some ways, I still feel this way, is that we're trying to look ahead here, and none of us have a crystal ball. But I'll tell you, Huntley just got their train station while they got the train service coming to them. They have been working for 10 years with their city's infrastructure to have the parking that they need, to slowly start acquiring different parts in their cities to accommodate rail service. Is it going to happen to DeKalb? Don't know. None of us know. But if that's something we think that's going to help this city to grow, to have future businesses, do a reverse commute, like to increase like we are on the south side of town, we have to start looking at different ways to make it easier, just like we're trying to get bus service for our people on the north side to get to jobs down there. On a bigger scale, we're looking to bring people to DeKalb. It might be the train. And we can't wait until Metro says, "We're coming." And now it's like, oh crap, now what we're going to do? We have to start planning ahead. The library, they started buying up things ahead of time. This is, this is what people have to do in this town that wants to grow. And so, it's about parking, yes. It's about businesses being able to have people come in, front and back doors, to have easy parking. Yes, it's about many things, but it's not just about 27 parking spaces. I know somebody said something, we could put a parking lot at Fourth and Lincoln, because there's just, we can't.
Tenures.
There's tenures. But we can't, because it's two state roads and a railroad, and you can't have driveways coming in to access that.
Well, we come in from the back, behind the bank.
That's the bank's built, that's the bank's land. Now, McCabe's is trying to work out a deal with them, but that's something private, that's not something that we can buy. not something that we can buy, it's an active business. But to come in from either Lincoln Highway or Fourth Street with the rep, we can't do that, the state limits us. So, see, a lot of things like, "Well, they could just do that." And it's like, I'm telling you, there's been people, and it's not just the six of us up here, that it's this group, and all the people and all the buildings that work for us and are committed to the city of DeKalb, that have looked, "Let's try this, let's try that." And we're looking at everything. And I know right now, it's like, well, it's this building. Right now, it is this building, but it's also, there's other future plans that we're trying to make DeKalb a place we all want to live and raise kids and grandkids in. And so, it always bothers me and frustrates me, is that it's just about 27 parking lot spaces, and that's all you guys are interested in. And we are going to help reimburse the owner of Tangles, just like we did all of the people at Hunter Hillcrest, when we took that building over to try to help the Antiglen North neighborhood. We didn't just lock the doors and say, "Find a place to put your business." There was people sitting in this room that spent their Sundays personally moving those people to other locations, along with cash money to, to move these businesses, for lost revenue. We understand that this is going to be a hardship for that, that business owner, we do. And we're going to try to be as compassionate, and not just, "Oh, we're so sorry," but compassionate out of our wallets compassionate, to make it as easy as possible. When we closed the senior center, oh my God. And, and hopefully, that worked out, the people I've talked to now, it's like, "Oh, it's, it's so much better, and it's so much more convenient, and the washrooms are so much safer, because I can get my walker in there." We're, we're trying, we're, you know, and, and we realize that, you know, there are going to be people that are going to be inconvenienced, angered. We're trying hard, and, and I know I'm a broken record on this, but we got 47,000 people, and hopefully, in next census, we'll have 50,000 people. And we'll have, you know, more businesses and more housing. And we just have to find the right route to get there. That impacts the most people positively and the least amount of people negatively. And, and I know it's not a right answer for everybody, but that's what we're trying to do. Thanks.
City manager.
Still in discussion, Mr. Chairman. So, the proposal before the council, from the staff anyway, was to table this for another meeting. And is that what the council's voting on?
We have a motion and a second on the floor to cease pursuit of this building. I have one other comment, that typically, again, when we're considering TIF, we have extraordinary justification on use of TIFs. There's no justification for the need for parking. We have a few owners talking about it, there's no data. I've been visiting downtown DeKalb, or driving to downtown DeKalb for 41 years, I have never had a challenge finding a parking spot. No, did I get the, the spot up front, the one that I wanted? Not necessarily, and that doesn't really happen in cities. And again, back to these parking needs, with a central business district SSA, if you look at other municipalities, they have free valet service, how about that? Again, you pull right up to these businesses, and a valet will park your car for you, again, at no cost to the taxpayers, but funded by these downtown property and business owners, where it should come from. It shouldn't come from the taxpayers across the entire city, and that's what we're talking about here. Alderman McAdams.
So I do have a question for the city manager. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my mic. So, my understanding was, thank you, sir. My understanding was that we were putting in a parking lot there, because that's the cheapest and easiest use of that property. Once that building is demolished, there's a line where we can't develop on, and we couldn't, we'd have to develop where the current building is, and that building's not really serving our needs. So I thought we were doing a parking lot simply because that's the cheapest use. But could we build another building on that property?
We, meaning the city?
The city, yeah. Or a developer.
Well, there'd be quite a buy-in price, if the city ended up buying this, right?
Yeah.
And demolishing it. It's, as you can see in the appraisal, it's the value of the, of the, bringing up the code and so forth exceeds the value, what the 370 is. And so, remodeling now is $550 a square foot, sometimes up from that. 18,000 square feet here.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, this is for city attorney Matt Rose. So, what Alderman McAdams was talking about, that kind of gets into that kilo New London type of thing, if the city was to buy that, then, you know.
If it's being bought for private redevelopment, that triggers a different type of analysis.
That's a whole different ballgame, isn't it? Okay. So, so here's my thing, so everybody's kind of making, you know, everybody's point. So, okay, it's a blighted building, it's raggedy, no one wants it. So, my thing is this, okay, we had one offer, or one appraisal at 243, and it jumped up to 380 overnight, I guess.
One was for just the outside, that was that first one.
But here's my thing, if it's a blighted building, and it looks the way it looks, I wouldn't want to give even 150 for it. So I say we just leave it alone, and maybe, you know, throw, you know, all that money to lessen the, you know, the burden of taxpayers. Because really, it is about 27 parking spots, that's what it is about. No matter how anybody tries to chop it up, it's about 27 spots that we don't need in downtown. So, that's just where I stand, and I stand with what Alderman Verbic said as well.
Just before you vote, can I ask one question of the council? You might want to talk about this. So, we've been inside and outside the building. People working both for the owners and for the city have noticed and taken photographs of the condition on the inside and the outside. And the, the best remark we've been able to get is that it was in fair condition in certain parts. So, now that we know this, what do you intend for us to do? Do you intend for us to enforce your property maintenance codes? Do you intend for us to turn an eye, a blind eye to it, or what do you want us to do? So, I mean, there are consequences to these things. And I should note, just for the record, that, that the TIF program we have, at least in the last four years, after a long suffering period of less than, I would say, heartily embracing TIF statutes in, in the state of Illinois. But we've been very transparent, we have, for a while, we were doing joint review board meetings, that's representatives of each of the local taxing bodies. In the first year that I arrived here, we were doing them on a monthly basis, you only have to do it by law once a year. We do it on a quarterly basis now. And the, the TIP joint review board has reviewed what we intend to do here, and is in favor of acquiring and demolishing the building, because they understand what I mean. They, they, these are people who live in town and participate in, in their way, in the, in the community, and, and they understand what we're proposing here. It's not, so, TIF is for several things, primarily and absolutely to encourage private redevelopment. And I've been an apostle of that, people have complained about helping developers. Well, look at the record, it's all about private redevelopment. But it's also for one thing, and actually, this is the first thing the tax increment financing was set up to do 40 years ago, 50 years ago now, probably. It's, it's the last resort, it's the but for, but for this, would the private marketplace fix the problem? What's your answer to that? Where have the suitors been to buy this and fix it and make it into a lively place? Heavens, make it a museum, you know, and, and that's not going to pay for itself. So, so what do you want us to do? And before you vote on not doing something, I think you have to tell us in the community what you will do.
Alderman Perkins.
My position's really kind of simple on it. The, the same owner has owned the building for 20 years and has done nothing with it. All the arguments that have come out about it being a historical building, about whatever is, whatever potential we could do, nothing has been done. That inaction is what's driving action for progress. Is it about 20 spots? To a degree, it is about 20 spots, but it's also about progress for the entire downtown. The, the entire flow of the downtown improves. And it is, it is a blighted building. Any way you look at any of the pictures, any way you look at it, it's an, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore with no plan to do anything. I've heard, I've heard lots of pontificating on what could be done, but there's no plan to do anything, aside from what is being proposed here, to, to tear it down, and, and try and do something positive for the downtown, that will benefit everybody in DeKalb, that will benefit future people coming into town, too. And I'm all ears if the owner comes up with a plan to do something with it, but there's been no plan to do anything with it, aside from leave it sit. You know, if you look at some of the plans, there's a little gym in there. It's a, it's a weightlifting gym. Is that, is that good use for, for, for the public? I don't, and, and not that it has to be, but my position is really kind of simple. It's a blighted building, and we're creating a plan to do something to improve the downtown. And I haven't seen or heard anything other than that. So, it's kind of, kind of where my head is.
Alderman Walker.
So, let me ask this, so let's say we start the process, and let's just fast forward it, let's say it goes into eminent domain, and a judge kind of, you know, makes you guys come to a median number, and it's like 450, 475. Are we okay with paying that on top of everything else you mentioned that needs to happen? That just seems like a, a, a pretty priced bill, you know, like Verbic, Alderman Verbic said, I'm sorry, attorney fees. So, it's really not just about the $800,000, it could be, you know, sky, you know, to the ceiling. So, let's say, you know, a judge came back and said, you know, sell it for 450, 475, could we back out then, or it's too late, once we go to these proceedings, it's whatever, you know, a judge comes with.
You may back out then.
Oh, okay. So, am I okay to ask, would you guys back out if a judge came saying for 450, 475?
It's your decision. It's your decision.
Yeah. So, okay, so it's our decision. So I'm just like, okay, all right.
Alderman McAdams.
I hate, I apologize, I really think we should only talk once or twice on a topic, and this is like my third time, and I apologize. But I do want to point out that the judge will decide what is fair, and it could be lower than 450, it could be lower than 300, it could be 150. And so, I'd rather hand it to a judge and let him decide to look at evidence and actual court rulings on what is evidence and what isn't evidence have already been decided, so it's a very simple thing. We put it before the judge, and we just ask the judge to decide. It's a dispute, it's clearly going on for months and months and months, and we have not come up with an answer. So if we give it to the judge, and, and the other side can prove that the city was not doing the right thing, then the judge will rule for them. And so I think that's a fair way to do it.
Sorry. Alderman Perkins.
One last point, one last point. City manager, I don't want to leave your quest, question twisting out there, the what do we do if we do, if we do back away at any point? I think that what do we do if we back away at any point for any reason is simple. We've got a safety issue for the, for the citizens of DeKalb. So do we have to ensure that that building is compliant and up to all the codes? Absolutely. So if we back away, going down this path and going in there, we can't recognize there's an issue and back away and leave the issue unaddressed. That would not be right in my book in any way whatsoever.
I'm also a staunch supporter of code enforcement. You know, you look at the buildings we've had to tear down already, those were a result of not, non-proactive code enforcement. So, I am one that would say, city manager, please, and also any investment that it may take to pursue more proactive code enforcement on every single building, especially multifamily buildings from a safety standpoint in DeKalb, I would encourage it. Also, the, I understand the properties for sale, if indeed a buyer was found, and they're interested in redeveloping that property to something new, or whatever the case may be, I would be all ears on what those TIF eligible expenses could be for redevelopment of that property. Mr. Dougherty, did you still have comments? I have your form here.
Last time, the three minutes goes by very fast, so here we go.
And it's still three minutes, thank you.
I do represent the DNJ Properties as the principal owner through Dan Sears, who's out of the country, and his brother is likewise not available to be here, so they regretfully could not make it. On half, behalf of them, I want to confirm to the city and the council that my client remains dedicated to proceeding and good faith negotiations towards resolving this. I'm realizing, the more meetings I attend, that you do have some heavy lifting to consider whether eminent domain should even be proceeded with. But I'm going to, and there are some considerations, you've talked about the parking, and is there data that supports this lack of parking and circling around forever? I haven't seen it either. But if there is that data, that's something for you to consider. But my focus would be on those negotiations as for price. In the agenda for tonight's meeting, it reads in part, quote, "Curiously, the appraisal performed by DNJ Properties dated July 12, 2023, referenced a pending offer of 596,250. Without other detail, the property als, is also listed through the multiple listing service for $795,000," end quote. Respectfully, I'm not certain what is curious about those facts, there is a pending contract at that amount, and the property was in fact listed as stated. Second, please note that this is not an appraisal that was performed by DNJ, or for it, or at its request. That appraisal was by a third party on behalf, as requested by a lender for a buyer. My client did not order that appraisal. So we have two appraisals ordered by the city. I'm trying to, as I said last time, assume positive intent, but those appraisals are significantly lower than the contract price, listing price, and the appraisal from the lender. The only independent appraisal that you have right now before you is from, not from, ordered by the city or by DNJ Properties, is that appraisal that lists the value at $630,000. I also would note that the appraisal that was done by the city, or at its request, the latest one, does indicate in part that the income approach would support a value for $640,000, but before some deductions, including market rent and other costs. But please note that DNJ Properties has not been intentionally marketing this at the highest rents possible. It's been using it for its business purposes that don't support, let's charge as much rent as possible. In the past, DNJ has bought and sold and maintained numerous properties in DeKalb, and when they approach the time that they want to sell it, they improve it, they make it as well as they can, and then they sell. They've not intended to do that here until the city came to them and said, "We might be interested in this property." We've been discussing potential fair metrics to determine what the price should be. Often, price per square foot is that best metric, and part of that is consideration of the condition of the property. And I, I've heard some concerns expressed about the condition of the property. But I think if we're going to say that we're going to focus on the condition of this property, then we also have to do some analysis and focus on the condition of all the other comparable properties that have sold, that have, that helped produce the competitive, comparative market analysis that we've given you, and these appraisals. And we can't just say, "Let's degrade and focus solely on the condition of the subject property." We're taking average.
Mr. Dougherty, if you could please wrap up.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, again, thank you for your time. My client remains dedicated to figuring this out.
Thank you. With the motion and a second on the floor, Ruth.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please.
Point of parliamentary procedure, there were two motions, there was one that initially brought this to the floor, and then there was your motion. I wouldn't consider your motion to be a motion to amend the original motion, and would take precedence, so, so that's, that's how I would interpret it. You're, you're the chair, you get to interpret it. But that's how I would say, and, and there would be a vote on your motion first.
Correct. So the motion to amend is on the floor, we have a first and a second. Any further comment? Alderman Sessata.
Can you repeat and clarify exactly what that motion was for?
My motion was to cease pursuit of this building effective immediately. Ruth, please call the roll.
Smith?
No.
Perkins?
No.
McAdams?
No.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sessata?
No.
Larson?
No.
Two I, five N.
Motion fails. Back to the original motion. Any further comment or question? Hearing and seeing none, Ruth, please call roll on the original motion.
Larson.
Or clarify, you need more clarification of which.
Original motion was by Alderman Walker, second was by Alderman Larson. That would be approved the first reading.
Yeah. And I think, I don't want to speak for Bill, but I think that what is in the agenda is that we didn't want to actually consider approving the reading, the first reading. We wanted direction to proceed with, as Bill set out, those three options. So more of a talk and then, you know, there'll be a motion to perhaps postpone and continue along those lines, but yeah.
So with the listed options, counsel, Alderman Sisada, did you have a comment or support one of the items?
Yeah, I guess I want to clarify. I think, as I understand what we're doing at this point is we're reviewing these options A, B, and C, which are all intertwined, basically it seems, and so we could say yes.
We understood that the owners would not be represented, would not be here tonight. They are represented ably by Mr. Dougherty. But we thought it was only fair that, and this worked into my recommendations Thursday when this was put together and went out to the public, that we would not take action on this tonight on first or second reading. It would be tabled again.
Okay.
And in that interim between now and the next meeting, we would try to sit down and possibly can do that next week when the owners return to talk once more about, is there, is there a path to get to an as-is market value that we all agree on? And then we'll come back and report to you at that meeting. And if there isn't, then you can decide whether we proceed or not.
Alderman Perkins.
So to clarify then, you're looking for some direction to proceed with items A, B, and C as written in there, but not necessarily an ordinance stating as such.
Correct.
So you're just looking for a general nod? Are we in majority agreement on the direction?
Generally like that, but mostly I wanted to table this tonight so that we had a chance to do the things we just discussed.
Alderman Larson.
So I make a motion to table this ordinance until our next meeting or September.
Yes, you can do that. You could also say, may I?
Sure.
And direct the city manager to follow the recommendations here.
Okay. So let's see if I can remember. So I make a motion to table this until our next meeting, but allow the city manager to pursue any kind of negotiations that we can with the.
My second it. Attorney Rose, would that be tabling or postpone? Tabling removes it from the agenda, correct?
Yeah, I think I would consider as a motion to postpone, but I mean, you can't say table and then it'll be brought back in a future agenda whenever the time is and you would approve the agenda, which would be taking it off the table. So it's, it's a matter of semantics.
Thank you. We have a motion to postpone on the floor. Any further comment, question? Ruth, please call the roll.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Walker?
No.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Five I, two N.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Thank you, love.
Number two, ordinance 2023-030, amending Chapter 51 Traffic Section 16 Parking Trucks to prohibit the parking of recreational vehicles on residential streets except during active loading and unloading. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. There's been an informal exception that is, has probably been used by owners of RVs who are not able or not willing to pay for another way to store them, so they leave them on the street for a long period of time. Alderman Verbic knows well, we have had a number of vehicles in his ward where people have done this and oftentimes they park across the street, because they don't want to see that, look at their RV, but their neighbor looks at it then for months at a time and it's all been perfectly legal. We want to put an end to that. There's no way around it nicely. If the owners are not agreeable to moving them after a reasonable period of time, like Cousin Eddie's in for the weekend and you want to accommodate them, but if that doesn't work, you know, we have no recourse. So what we're trying to do is just clean up some quiet neighborhoods that have had range wars over RVs on the street.
Counsel, comments, questions? Alderman McCann.
I just want to thank city staff for addressing this issue. This is a big issue and we really appreciate the work.
I can tell you that police department's been very keen on doing this as well and we thank them.
Alderman Sisada.
I have had complaints about this and, you know, tried to tolerate the ones in my own neighborhood, but so, so I do think it's important and relevant and people are concerned about this.
Alderman Perkins.
I guess I do have one question with this, so, and it's just a real life one. I haven't had the issue in my ward, but I do know my ward, sometimes people will have some family come over with an RV and park the RV in the street for a week or so. Is that still going to be tolerable?
Yeah, there's the rule of reason here, which should happen ideally in every neighborhood, every city USA or anywhere in the world. You actually talk to your neighbors once in a while and the neighbors can call the police department, for instance, if they don't know their fellow neighbors very well and don't interact with them and just say, look, here's our situation. It might take a week, there's been a death in the fam, whatever their circumstances are, and our police department will be accommodating.
So it's going to be a little latitude.
Yeah. As long as there's no holes that goes through the storm sewer or something.
There's a quote that I won't repeat.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
But if this RV is parked on private property, for example, back to Ward Six, city manager, thank you for bringing that up. There's been an RV parking on occasion in the Schnucks parking lot. So then is that something that the police department takes a look at or does that require a call from Schnucks to say, we have an RV?
That's our billing department. You know, it might be, I don't know if the vehicle's operable or unlicensed, but this is for vehicles on the street on the public way.
Thank you. Alderman Walker.
Hey, city manager, is there another way that we can, for instance, I have a neighbor that does this and he has a father-in-law that comes in town like quarterly. Is there a way that we can go not deal with the police and go another route? Because me personally, I don't want to deal with the police, I'm sure he doesn't. So is there another route that, you know, maybe call the city or get a parking pass?
No, it's because it's on the street, this is what the police have purview over on the, for enforcement on the street, the billing department doesn't. And there's, there's no way around that.
No way around it.
It's the right thing. So also it's just, if they're going to be enforcing it, they're the people you want to talk to.
I can't wait them all.
Any other comments, questions? Alderman Sisada.
And, you know, I apologize if I overlooked this, but so we clarified street versus private property, however, like your front yard, is that okay?
That's, no, it has to be a paved surface. You know, if you just pull, well, we see this once in a while. Sometimes, you know, our property maintenance inspector will stop and say, hey, what's, what's going on here? And you see the ruts, you know, across the, from the driveway up into the front yard. You don't see it that often with RVs. You see it with cars sometimes in neighborhoods where there's some, you know, there's some turnover every fall, people need to know you got to park on an approved surface, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-030 passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second reading has been moved to be waived by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Sisada. Comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-030. Moving on, agenda item number three, ordinance 2023-031, approving a water service agreement with Mark Carpenter for 209 Greenwood Acres Drive. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Mark, thank you for being patient. Mr. Carpenter in the front row has a property at 209 Greenwood Acres Drive. Along with other properties around, along Greenwood Acres Drive, some of which is in the city, some of which is in the unincorporated DeKalb County, there have been over, over recent years, there's been interest in connecting to public water and public sewer, where there is sewer. There's, we can, it's less expensive to bring the water than it is the sewer to some of these locations. And this council has recently, as of fall last year, added one more of these houses as being eligible for connection to our system. We don't look for these opportunities, we'd rather that people are annexed to the city, but we also understand, it's preferable to us in the broader scheme of things and to the I E P A that people are on a public, a certified public water system. And so Ryan Faber, who's director of utilities and transportation, has talked to Mr. Carpenter and other city members have, they are willing to pay what our code requires, which is one and a half times the regular cost for the privilege of connecting to our water system. And we support this, this proposed agreement and recommend your approval.
Counsel, comments, questions? Kind of surprised by that, okay. Yeah, I'm just going to make a comment and I'm absolutely for this, 100%. But at some point I would like to have a discussion on, I'm not sure why someone can own property in the city of DeKalb, surrounded by the city, have the benefit of fire, police, all those things, but ultimately not pay city of DeKalb taxes, correct?
Well.
I mean, I don't pay school district.
Yeah. Schools, they would be annexed to the school, it might be even annexed to the park. They're not annexed to the KWRD or us in most cases.
Yeah.
And so we collaborate with the county sheriff's department, which makes regular runs down in that area and they, they go out another area maybe through incorporated DeKalb. And so we, you know, take turns and help out each other. Plowing, same thing. We plow along here, it doesn't make sense for us to lift our plow and then go.
No, I get that.
So we do that. And then we do its trading, so, but I hear you. Ultimately, it's a, it's a bigger area conversation.
It is.
And what we've, what we've done, and it's been a long time since we've done this, but what makes sense to me is at some point you invite the neighbors in and you do some old fashioned calculation. We'd like you to be in. At this point, we could possibly, looking for Ms. Olson, we could probably force annex if we wanted. We haven't done that, but could be done. And then we would talk both about the cost and the benefit and have a good old public meeting about it and see who wants to participate and who doesn't. And then it goes back to the council for a decision. But these things are, as we haven't done that, then these things just rise and we do them one at a time. And I agree with you, at some point it makes a lot of sense to do that.
I think it'd be good at some point just to identify, so council's aware of, it's staggering in a way, maybe not staggering, but there's a lot of properties in the city of DeKalb that are essentially surrounded by a city, but not actually annexed and not parked. So I think that'd be a good one, just to at least make us aware of what that looks like and we can always choose what we want to do from there. But right now, we just have this one before us, so at this point, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll take roll call. All right, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Ordinance 2023-031 was passed on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second reading has been motioned to be passed for, moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-031. Mr. Carpenter, thanks for coming out. I wish we were like a restaurant and we had that little, your things up for, but yeah, have a great night, sir. All right, moving on to agenda item M, reports and communications. Who'd like to kick us off? Alderman Smith.
I attended Casa Fifty Men Who Can Cook on Saturday night. Congratulations to Alderman Verbic, third place, I believe. So I ate too much and he's at fault. That's all I have.
Alderman McAdams.
Yes, I want to give a shout out to Public Works for a fantastic job doing the mural under the underpass at Annie Glidden. It looks fantastic and it's very sharp. I do have something I want to discuss that I think needs to be discussed and I think this is the appropriate forum for that. One of our aldermen had a ward meeting recently and residents from another ward showed up to disrupt the proceedings. This is following a long history of behavior in this city. So as a result, I am no longer going to hold ward meetings. If you would like us to gather an audience for you to embarrass our staff, to denigrate our city council, to denigrate our city manager, you will not find it in the fifth ward. If you need to reach me, you can call me at 779-777-2932, or you can text me 24 hours a day. So there should be no further questions about fifth ward and unavailability. You can call me at 3:00 in the morning, I'll leave my ringer on. But I'm not going to gather together residents in town so that you can embarrass the people who work here. They do a wonderful job, they're very dedicated and they don't, they deserve better treatment than that.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, if we could, I've got a lot of complaints about the bridge work. If we can kind of give an update weekly with that, because I don't know what's going on and I don't really know what to tell, you know, the people that are asking me. So if we can figure out how to do that, so that rides smoothly, I would appreciate it.
Assuming Zach Gill could send out something or, I mean, part of the weekly reports?
Yeah, we could do it at council meetings. It's very public, nothing more public than that. People don't, I wish more people would read our website, it's a good website, but they don't always do that. So I'd be happy, you know, we can do that. Mr. Gill was almost always here, but he had a conflict tonight, so it's not here. But I would just tell you this, we, we got, we have a good general contractor and a piece of this has been the utility piece and discussions with the major utilities began two years ago. And in advance of the beginning of the demolition and reconstruction, everybody was on the same page or so we were hearing. But two of the utilities, we know, were slow, one particularly slow. one particularly slow, and in this case, there's, when you're crossing, you know, water and you're putting dams in, all the work stops if one piece doesn't keep working, because you've got big cranes and so forth, they expect people to be there, they go elsewhere while they assume that's being done, and they don't come back until it's done. So we've lost weeks on one and many weeks on another. Now, North First Street, we lost more time on, but they were further ahead of the game when they normally were going to hit that point where they had to get out of the way for the utilities. It's a different thing on Lucinda, and as of Friday, the call was being discussed with the general contractor. Now we're at this point where you're darned if you do and darned if you don't. So is the whole thing going to be done? Is the deck going to be on and paved and striped by the time the hard freeze comes? Probably not. And but can all the utility work be done so that you get a fast start in the spring? Well, a fast start in the spring means if asphalt is the most significant remaining piece, you can't do that until the weather warms. That's May-June, rather than March-April. So we're talking about months there when nothing is done. We'd love to plow ahead, but we don't feel we can get to the safe point before, unless we, you never know. I mean, we've had some late starts to our winters, we've had 60 degrees on Christmas Day, but you can't count on that, and there's a lot of dollars at stake here. So we're, we intend to raise, as far as this costs to us, we intend to raise that with the post utilities. So I would say, Zach, there's nobody asleep on our end, and I know nobody in the council saying that, there were some comments, I gather, on social media that might have been the case, and why didn't we call a Julie? Well, I mean, Julie is what you call for a small, you know, we're going to dig here, well, this is a huge thing, that's why we had two years of discussion with many people in the room. So I give credit to Zach Gill, who comes into my office almost daily to say where we are on any of these large projects. So thanks for the question. Zach will be here at the next meeting, and he'll be here every other meeting, or we'll have a written report to share with you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Verbic.
Alderman McAdams, I understand your comments. I, my feedback I had from residents was they would like more meetings, so going forward, I think what I'm going to do is have, I would call them less formal gatherings, so perhaps at different businesses in Ward Six, I'll announce that I'm meeting everyone for coffee or for this or for that, just to have casual conversation. And if there's a technical question that I can't answer, then I would need to go to city staff to discover what that answer is, and then report back to city staff. But again, I do appreciate your comment, and Fire Chief Thomas and City Engineer Gill, and I'll thank you for your participation, because city manager Nicholas was treated with unacceptable disrespect. Not sure what else to call it, but I really believe the ward meetings are important to Ward Six, and I certainly took offense and corrected that behavior immediately at that time, and we could carry on with our discussion with Chief Thomas and city engineer Gill. But it can't go unsaid that that was unacceptable by the Ward Five resident, and I will not name names.
We all know who it is.
I attended a fire engine, that's okay, fire engine dedication, which was really neat, amazing machine, had no idea of what it can do, so thanks to everyone that made that happen, and as Alderman Smith mentioned, yeah, a couple of great fundraisers, Fifty Men Who Cook, and also I attended Tales on Tap, which was, again, another outstanding fundraiser. That's all.
Alderman Perkins.
So I am considering doing an award meeting. Please send ideas or topics for discussion to me, and we'll figure something out.
Alderman Larson.
No report.
Alderman Zazada.
So I think I've got my award meeting scheduled for September 12th. I know Ruth is the one, all right, she's nodding. So September 12th, which is Tuesday, I'm still figuring out the location, but to address some of what Alderman McAdams mentioned, I just want to note that I believe I read in the paper once that council members are required to have annual ward meetings, and I just want to clarify that these are, that is not the case. It's not the case. It is just a thing that they do to be accessible, so that's all.
Alderman Smith.
No, we go again?
Oh, sorry. It was so riveting.
First time around was so riveting, can we keep going?
All right, all right. So just quickly, I've, you know, had conversations recently with State Representative Jeff Kiker, State Representative Lance Yednok, and have a meeting set up with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, really just advocating for just what we need to continue the incredible economic development we're having on the south side of town. That just doesn't happen on its own, and I got to give city manager Nicholas and city staff a credible amount of kudos to help move that along, and then it's also, there's some stuff we need to do as elected officials to help move things along, too. But everyone has been fantastic to work with, and I can never say enough really about State Representative Kiker. He's always picking up the phone, always answering, always offering to lean in, and he's not even our representative anymore. Also, had the honor of facilitating Congresswoman Underwood's town hall that she had at DeKalb High School a couple of weeks ago. That was just, it's always a great event, it's the second one I've done for her, and she is just a wonderful woman who has done a great job advocating for the city of DeKalb and working with us, and it's great to see our US Congresswoman, our Congressman, our US Congressperson lean in and support DeKalb the way she does. Also attended with, Alderman Verbic was there, city manager Nicholas, I think Commander Lakus was there, I can't remember who else from city staff, but the District 428 had a whole planning session, essentially, regarding the new school and some other ideas they had. I thought it was a good discussion, and I think the city represented ourselves well and made sure we were clear on things we would like to see during that process. Also, went to the Human Relations Commission meeting, and had a discussion with them about some items that they had and some things that we needed to move forward. Also, it was really cool, got to go down to Bloomington Normal. We basically got veteran of the, veterans, the most friendly veterans city in the state of Illinois, as well as Officer Alley was honored as a first responder, which was really cool, and Michael Embry as well, as an individual in our community, and it was a, it was a great ceremony, we had a lot of laughs, chief, which was cool, just a great group of people. But it was a nice, it was a nice honor for the city of DeKalb to have, because, and I'll give Michael Embry a lot of credit for driving this, but you do look around, you will see that we are a very veteran-friendly city. The Elks Club's been a great supporter as well, so it was nice to get recognition from the state level on something like that as well. So we got a really cool plaque, I think we'll be putting up at the city hall next to all the shovels, and just a constant reminder, which is great. I also was able to go to the Aruna Run, it was their first run, and it was a kickoff, and that's a fundraiser, basically, to help assist people that have been human trafficked, getting back into society, getting back on their feet, and really trying to be successful. And it was impressive, I bet almost 200 people showed up for their first run, I thought that was really cool, and I got to thank city staff, as well as our police department, for helping them out with that. As always, went on the WLBK radio show with TD Ryan, great Q and A, and I will echo, I think it was Alderman McAdams, talking about the mural, that was wonderful. Scott Zach gets a lot of credit for helping drive that, as well as the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, and we use the funds from the T-Mobile grant that we received, if you all remember a couple of years ago, to help fund that, and that is a great entry point, perfect timing for all the students coming back to NIU, as well as all the people that are going to come to football games and all the alumni, and quite frankly, when I came home, too, I came in on Annie Glidden, it was really neat to be welcomed to DeKalb that way as a former Husky, or I guess you're never a former Husky. That's all I got. What about you, city manager?
No report, sir.
Okay. Hearing that, agenda item N, executive session, we have none, and then agenda item O, adjournment, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign, we're adjourned.